She would love to do that.
Good evening. Let me call to order the regular board of the board trustees of the Southmost Union Junior College District. Today we have President Trustee Rosemary Breedlove, Mr. David Oliveira, Ms. Dolly Zimmerman, Dr. Roberto Robles, Mr. Eduardo Campirano, and our President, Dr. Julia Garcia. Mrs. Cardinals is out of town. First item on the agenda is the presentation of a book by Mr. Carl Chilton Jr. entitled "The First Border Post." And I'm going to ask Mr. Barry Horn to please approach the podium. There he is. Hi, Barry.
Good evening, Chairman Gonzalez, trustees, and President Garcia. I have the honor this evening of presenting a respected researcher and author. Carl S. Chilton Jr. is a name well-known throughout our region as a respected professional, published author, and an admired historian. Mr. Chilton's eighth book was copyrighted for the Brownsville Historical Association and published through UTB TSC. The book is entitled "Fort Brown: The First Border Post." The book tells the story of the important role this historic military post played along the border for nearly 100 years, and the importance of Fort Brown to its neighboring community, Brownsville, and during these more recent 55 years, Texas Southmost College. It is a story that has needed to be told. May I present Carl Chilton?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I would like to take a couple of minutes to tell you something about this project. Three or four years ago, I got interested in the idea of writing a history of Fort Brown. I did some preliminary research and found there was a lot of material about Fort Brown, but it was widely scattered among books, newspaper articles, magazine stories, reports, correspondence, and so forth. I found that Bruce Aiken's extensive files and considerable other material were located in the archives of the Brownsville Historical Association. And I found considerable material in the Hunter Room of the university library. I was surprised to find that no one had ever written a full history of the fort as a military reservation. And I felt there were so many major developments in the Fort Brown area during the past 60 years that this story, this should be part of the story. So I went ahead and started working on the manuscript. And after I'd made some project, made some prospects, I had decided this was a good story and wanted to see what could be done about getting it published. I discussed this with Dr. Tony Knopp, and we felt that either the university or the Brownsville Historical Association were the most logical prospects to sponsor the publishing It turned out that the two organizations agreed on a joint effort with the university to publish the book and the Historical Association to market it. I spoke with Dr. Garcia about this some time ago, and her support has helped make this project possible. We've now reached the point where the book is available, and the marketing effort will start soon. I've received much feedback from the community regarding the newspaper articles and the Brownsville Herald, and I feel the book will be well-received, and I feel the cost will be recovered to the university and to the Brownsville Historical Association. I appreciate the support of Dr. Garcia and the university, and I'm happy to be able to present copies this evening to her and to the board members.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I had their individual names on.
Oh, wonderful.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Let me add to Chilton that I'm one of your avid readers of your articles and newspaper. It's so interesting to know the history of our town, which is Fort Brown is the center of our town, back in the old days of the West. And it's our heritage, and if we can understand how this fort was built and how it impacted the community of Brownsville, then we can better understand ourselves. And so I find your knowledge of history just unbelievably wonderful, and I thank you, sir, for being our most distinguished gentleman in the history field here on our campus. Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm happy to have been here, and I'm glad to make you all the good work you're doing up here.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I might add that we'd like to assist in the marketing efforts, so if you're thinking about Christmas gifts, it's not too early to put in your order. There could be no more special gift than the history of our own place, and so we'll be happy to help you acquire some copies.
Call to help.
Call, copy. Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Thank you, Mrs. Chilton.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Mr. Chilton.
Thank you.
Next item is Dr. Garcia's report.
I have a couple of items that I'd like to report before our board meeting, before your executive session. The first is introduction of Berta Barrera. Berta, would you please stand? Berta Barrera joined the president's office staff in March. Bert, as she is called by many, will be assisting with all of our functions, especially those relating to mail, filing, and receiving gifts. She is a graduate of Brownsville High School around the time many of the rest of us graduated from Brownsville High School. Well, you can pick your pick, but you know, some of us. And in 2002, she received her degree from UT Brownsville, Texas Southmost College, her bachelor's degree. She has 30 years of experience with the U.S. Attorney's Office in various support positions. Bert has worked with former TSC board member Ricardo Lara, Assistant U.S. Attorney in Charge of the Brownsville Division, and Mervyn Mossbacker. We are very, very fortunate to have someone with her experience and with her ties to the community and to this university and our office. Welcome, Bert, to our university. I'd like to ask Dr. John Renault, please, to introduce our new director.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Fitra Tulakhan as Director of Infrastructure, Telecommunications, and Networks, also known as ITNET. ITNET is responsible for communication infrastructure on campus and off campus, connectivity and wireless. Dr. Khan holds a bachelor's, master's, and PhD in electrical engineering from the University of Texas at Arlington, and a master of science in computer science from the University of Kansas, a very fine institution, I might add. Dr. Khan joined UTB TSC Department of Computer Science in 1992 as associate professor. He was instrumental in developing the baccalaureate degree in computer science. Dr. Khan holds the rank of full professor and continues to teach in that department. In the relatively short time this department has existed, ITNET has provided the institution with a state-of-the-art networking infrastructure. Under his leadership, high-performance fiber has been extended to most of the campus buildings, and wireless coverage has been made available to 90% of the campus. In comparison, for example, University of Texas Pan American has wireless in their library only, but we have it 90% of our campus. Dr. Khan and his staff do a remarkable job in bringing us into the 21st century in this infrastructure. We are very appreciative and pleased to make this appointment. Would you please join me in congratulating Dr. Khan?
I must tell you that no one is going to ask me to say anything. Well, it's a really an honor to be director, and I see it as an opportunity to serve the students, faculty, and staff and community, and I look forward to doing so. And hopefully you'll be seeing me more and more in the board meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Khan. I appreciate it.
May I say, Mr. Chair, that Dr. Khan is everywhere, and he's out there working himself. He doesn't send other people to do it. You see Dr. Khan, everybody else is gone, and Dr. Khan's out there working, you know, trying to make us all.
From digging the trenches to connecting the wires.
And we're so appreciative of what you do.
Absolutely.
We see it. We do see it, and we thank you very much.
And he has taught.
That's the kind of dedication we have from our faculty and staff and everybody, and it really shows, and we thank you so much.
Sorry. He's also taught that work ethic to everyone who works with him. And so you see him always with a small crew of guys working very, very hard, and so it is very impressive to not only have the expertise yourself, but to take the time to teach so many of our students the expertise as well. Thank you. Thank you, dear sir. I have one more announcement. I'd like to introduce Dr. Stockton, Carl Stockton, our dean of the School of Education, who's going to introduce some students and professors who are here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Garcia. I'd like to take the opportunity to share with you a very exciting event that's occurred for our students in the School of Education. For the second year in a row, students at UTB TSC School of Education have won top honors at the 10th Annual NASA Pre-Service Teacher Conference in Washington, D.C., held in mid-February. The students majoring in education received first place for their presentation entitled "Life Cycle of a Butterfly: Complete or Incomplete Metamorphosis." Over 750 students from more than 56 universities and colleges across 37 states attended the conference that focuses on preparing teachers in the integration of science, math, and technology in the classroom. A requirement for attending the conference was to develop and present a lesson using a model that can be duplicated nationwide. Nineteen judges, most of them working for NASA, judged the contest. Our students, for the second year in a row, won that competition. The students now have been accepted for a two-week training camp sponsored by NASA Johnson Space Center in Houston to round off their field experiences. At this time, I'd like to introduce their faculty sponsor this year, Mr. Sam Garcia, who will then say a few words and introduce the students.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. Dr. Garcia, chairman, members of the board. At this time, I'd like to, first of all, just read what's on the inscription on the plaque, and it says, "The 10th Anniversary Celebration of the NASA Pre-Service Teacher Conference, University of Texas, Brownsville, First Place: Helping Tomorrow's Teachers Inspire the Next Generation of Explorers." This was signed by Dr. Adrian Dorrington, Director of NASA Pre-Service Teacher Program, and Roger Hathaway, Acting Director of the Office of Education, NASA Langley Research Center. I'd like to just say also, this is what this university is putting forth in educating the future teachers that are going to be out there working with the students. And they definitely know where the University of Texas, Southmost, University of Texas, Brownsville is on the map, because when they announced the winners, they just definitely said, "Oh, no, not again. Here we go." They definitely know where Brownsville is located. And so this is just a testament to the great things that the faculty, the professors here at the university are doing with the outstanding curriculum that's being put forward. And this is a group of students that basically had to come together in a very short amount of time and work as a team and put forward a quality product. So I'd like for them to step forward and just give their name and their major, if you will. Thank you.
My name is Brenda Gonzalez, and I'm an education major, early childhood through fourth grade, specializing in ESL language. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gladys Sanchez, and I'm also an education major, early childhood through fourth grade, specializing in ESL, English Second Language.
My name is Lupita Escobar, and I'm a bilingual education major, early childhood through fourth grade.
Good afternoon. My name is Hector Lara, and I am early childhood through fourth grade bilingual education major.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Axum, and I'm an all-level kinesiology major.
Thank you very much.
Let me just say one last thing. Next year, we're going for a three-peat.
No pressure. Super Bowl.
Thank you very much for coming this evening, and thank you for representing this university so well. Congratulations. Appreciate it. Very, very nice. That concludes the three items that I wanted to report.
Okay, now, the board now convenes to executive session as required by government codes after 5:00. The board is now, will not convene in regular session. And first item, that's for consideration, fossil action, as discussed in the executive session, is the bond projects management, and I'd like to report on that. Several months, several important steps have already been completed in carrying out the bond projects. The first $20 million in bonds have been sold. The board determined that the timeline to complete the bond projects would be the faster track. We have a bid this evening to carry out one important bond project to increase the parking facilities on our campus. Work has begun in developing, programming for wellness recreation and the kinesiology complex, and the ITech thermal plant renovation. Now we are ready for the next step of project implementation. As per the request of this board, Dr. Garcia has developed action plans for the management of the bond projects. One of the plans deals with the mechanics of the construction progress or process. Due to the various facets of each project, constant and diligent supervision is required in order to have a functional facility. The recommendation is to establish an office of the Assistant Vice President for Construction under the Division of Administration and Partnership Affairs. The office will consist of the Assistant Vice President, an accountant, and administrative support. In addition to the staff, a project management firm will be hired to assist in programming and construction phases, among other services. Requests or proposals will be issued in order to hire that firm. The Assistant Vice President for Construction will oversee and act as the campus representative on all projects. This person will also lead the bond management firm, architectural, and construction teams. The position of Assistant Vice President for Construction will report to the president, and staff is recommending that Veronica Mendez be appointed to serve as Assistant Vice President for Construction. I would like to request this board a motion to create the position of Assistant Vice President for Construction and appoint Veronica Mendez to this position.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Breedlove.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Roberto Robles. Any discussion on this item? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Another essential aspect for the successful management for the bond projects is a communication plan. A plan has been developed that would serve as the instrument to disseminate information and obtain input from the various community members, as well as the board of trustees. The bond election campaign and process brought to life is a sense of community involvement that this board wishes to maintain. A construction project advisory committee is to be established for each project, with a trustee serving as a liaison to the board and the committee members. Members of the committee could include one or more members of the following groups: TSC trustees, faculty, staff, students, community, and development board. The committees will be involved in the strategic stages of project development. The following trustees will serve as liaisons to the committees to be formed for each of the bond projects. For the Early Childhood Development Center, we appoint Dolly Zimmerman. For the Kinesiology Building Project, appoint Eddie Campirano. For the Library Project, I appoint Mr. David Oliveira. For the Fine Arts Complex, I appoint Dr. Roberto Robles. For the Biomedical Research Project, I appoint Rosemary Breedlove. And for the ITech Renovation Project, I appoint Mary Rose Cardinals. As you can see, this is a very inclusive plan that we have to follow the wishes of this community and the implementation of the future of this campus. And I'm very satisfied and very, I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Mendez, the rest of the board members, the rest of the community, faculty, staff, and all in concern to get this campus moving in the right direction as the community wants us to move. So for that, I think we should have applause. I'd like to ask Dr. Garcia to please, for the comments.
I am very glad to be.
I'm going to ask to be excused, I have to catch a plane, and thank you, and I will enjoy serving in my position. Thank you.
Look forward to working with you, sir. I want to thank the board for approving the management plan and for helping us, guide us forward, what I think will be a very, very helpful communications plan. We'll begin to detail out the work of each of these committees now, and to begin to invite members of the faculty, staff, and students, and community, and other boards associated with the university to play part of this work. You have put us on a faster track, and that means that we're going to need your time to make sure that the projects get started, developed, programmed, and in fact, get done in that short timeframe. So we expect to be very, very busy, and we look forward to that. I also am very pleased that you have agreed to allow us to appoint Veronica Mendez as Assistant Vice President for Construction. Mrs. Mendez has shown her loyalty, her commitment, and her strength, and her skill to our work over the past few years in many, many ways. She is flexible, she is honest, she is meticulous, and she puts up with all of us, and that's tough. I know that she is up to this task, and I look forward to working with her even more closely. So thank you, Ms. Mendez, for accepting this position.
Mr. Chairman, may I say a few words? Also, I'd also like to thank Dr. Moore for all the work that he's done in the previous projects and their, what size shoes do you wear? Veronica, those are the shoes that you're going to have to fill, so I know you're going to do a great job. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We now move to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of March 22nd. I'd ask for motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Zimmerman, excuse me, by Mrs. Breedlove, seconded by Mr. Campirano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. Item four, speakers to agenda items and open discussion. Do we have any, any takers? No, Mary? Thank you. Item five is a board briefing on the UTB TSC Testing Office, an overview by Dr. Ruth Ann Ragland.
Mr. Chairman, board, Dr. Garcia, our board briefing tonight is an overview of the UTB TSC Testing Office. This is an office that plays an extremely important role in our institution. It has contact with every person who becomes a student at UTB TSC. This is the office that is responsible for administering the state-mandated assessment test known as THEA. The director of the testing office is Dr. Patrick McGee. Dr. McGee has been our Director of Testing for 11 years. Before he came to us, he was Associate Director of Counseling and Testing at Roosevelt University in Chicago. And prior to that, he was a machinist for Illinois Central Railroad for 11 years, and he served as a hospital corpsman for the U.S. Navy for four years. His bachelor's degree is in psychology from Governor State University in Illinois. His master's is in psychology from Roosevelt University in Chicago, and his doctorate in higher education is from University of Houston. Ms. Karen Stowe is our Assistant Director of Testing. She also has been in the testing office for 11 years. These two have worked together a long time. She previously spent nine years as Testing Services Administrator at Texas A&M in College Station. Her bachelor's degree is in flora culture from A&M in College Station, and her master's is in educational technology from UTB TSC. May I present Pat McGee and Karen Stowe for our briefing.
This is a test.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. We're pleased to be able to tell you a little bit about our office. Our office was established in January 1994, and we were established to provide test administration services to the university community. We administer over 30 different testing programs, and we do subscribe to professional test administration standards and guidelines. And it's our goal to maintain an efficient, cost-effective, professional organization that's dedicated to the university and also to our profession. We do aim high with our vision statement. We do hope to be the region's leading provider for high-quality test administration services. And in our mission statement, we indicate that by providing professional, assessable, service-oriented testing opportunities, that we can help individuals and organizations to meet their goals. In our day-to-day operations, we keep the following values in mind. These are to provide a public service by offering the widest possible variety of testing services available in deep south Texas and northern Mexico; to provide outstanding customer service that's focused on courtesy, responsibility, and accuracy; to recruit and retain qualified, professional, and dedicated staff; to provide comfortable and accessible facilities that are conducive to a quality testing environment; and to collaborate with our institutional, community, regional, and national partners to keep abreast of trends in all aspects of The testing office is staffed by four full-time personnel. Our main testing room is across the hall from our office in Tandy, and it consists of a multi-purpose pencil, paper, and computer-based facility. The room seats 45 people for pencil-paper testing and four for a computer-based testing application. This is a view from the back of the room and from the front of the room. It's important to note that testing guidelines do prohibit us from administering pencil-and-paper and computer-based tests simultaneously. Last month, we acquired the use of this room in ITech to administer pencil-and-paper-based testing, and this room seats 50. In addition, we have a multi-purpose computer-based facility in Tandy Hall, again across from our administrative offices, and we use it for a variety of tests at seats nine. We thought that we'd share just some particulars about the office. We thought that we'd share just some particulars about the office with you and then Pat's going to discuss some of the testing programs. No private business or institution in the Rio Grande Valley offers the wide variety of testing programs that we do. We routinely serve clients from Rio Grande City to Kingsville to Mexico City. There has been no turnover in the full-time staff since the office was established.
Wow.
It's all due to Pat. Our office generates revenue that is ample to fund one of our full-time positions and four part-time positions as well as providing us with an operations and travel budget. We test approximately 10,000 individuals yearly. We are a member of the National Consortium of Collegiate, of College Testing Centers and this membership helps us to serve distance learners in our area that need to take proctored exams. The institution that a learner is attending can locate the collegiate testing center through the consortium and they know that the consortium members are going to keep their tests secure while providing the learner with an appropriate testing environment. We are members of the National College Testing Association and the Texas Association of Collegiate Testing Personnel. And although my grandmother said that I should never brag, both Pat and I are members of, both Pat and I are past presidents of the Texas Association of Collegiate Testing Personnel and we're the only institution in Texas to have two past presidents on staff. And now Pat's going to tell you about some particular programs.
Thank you and good evening. I forgot to tell Dr. Ragland that I do pay 50 cents a month to keep my union dues active just in case. Probably the only testing director that's also a certified machinist and welder, so.
Absolutely.
Hopefully this goes well. I'll be back on the locomotives. I want to talk about the Texas Success Initiative real fast. This came into play, well, TASP has been around since 1989. September 2004, the law changed to make it now the Texas Success Initiative. Again, this test is, or TSI is required by state law to ensure that students enrolled in Texas Public Colleges and Universities possess the academic skills needed to perform effectively in college-level coursework. The TSI, how that has changed from the TASP, the TSI is now, there's a test component, testing component, an advising component, and a student plan component. No longer does a student have to hope, take the test over and over again. The state has decided that let them take the test once, let's properly place them, let's properly advise them, let the student learn something, and now the institution can determine if that student's college-ready or not. So I thought, think that was a wonderful move that happened in September 2004.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe you're going to address it. If they do well on the TASP, do they, are they exempted from TSI?
Yes, ma'am. And we go a couple more screens, I think we'll mention that, sure. Right now, there's several assessments that can be used to fulfill the Texas Success Initiative. The THEA, Quick THEA, computer-based THEA which we administer here on campus, the Asset with Writing which we administer here on campus, the Compass E-Write which hopefully will get up and running in June of this year, and the Accuplacer. The exemptions for the Texas Success Initiative, there's a few right here, SAT scores, ACT, TOSS, and TOCS. TOSS and TOCS are taken in high school. And what changed in September 2004, before you were exempt on the SAT, ACT, TOSS, and TOCS, it was all or nothing. Now you can mix and match. You can be exempt on the verbal part based on the SAT score, maybe the math part based on your tax score. So it gives our students, our incoming students, a wider variety of exemption levels that they seem to enjoy because that's one test they do not have to take. A new one is someone coming in with associate's degree. Is already Texas Success Initiative exempt if you have a bachelor's degree, a Level One certificate program, and a new one since September 2004 was the people that were released, retired, or discharged from military service are now exempt. What's new? We have a couple things to brag about real fast. Our GED testing is new and of course this develops the, measures the outcome of a high school education. More than 95% of U.S. employers consider GED graduates the same as traditional high school graduates. The GED battery consists of five tests, one in each of these subjects, writing skills, mathematics, sciences, social studies, and reading. So a student needs to take that and pass all five of those before GED is awarded. GED is available monthly here at UTB TSC in both English and Spanish. In 2004, we completed our first full-year GED testing. We were able to administer to 351 individuals a GED test and of that, 83 individuals successfully completed their GED at UTB TSC. I think of all the testing that I've done in the years I've been in this, the GED for me is really the most rewarding. These are the students that will come back and actually hug you and cry and just want to do everything because we have truly, I know we impact everybody's life, but we have truly impacted these 83 individuals that can go, now go on to higher education, you know, better job, whatever they want. And this is probably one of our most rewarding tests. What's coming? One more thing. The Compass E-Write, we talked about that. That is an internet-based test for Texas Success Initiative. We're going to transition to this as our primary instrument for meeting the Texas Success Initiative requirement. We hope to start in June 2005. The advantage to this, the scores are available immediately. With artificial intelligence, when the student types their essay on the computer, that computer will be able to score it, their math part, their reading multiple choice, probably within about four or five seconds. So we're now able to not have to wait two weeks for test results to come in. A student can take the test, if it's here on campus, take the test, it's scored, walk to advising, get advised, get registered, all within the same time period that the THEA would take, the five hours. And I was able to talk to Dean Phillips and he has graciously let us, will let us use his lab whenever it's not in use to administer the Compass E-Write. And one more advantage, internet-based, if a student is in Canada, California, anywhere there's internet, they can take the test for Texas Success Initiatives without having to come to the state of Texas. So it saves a student one trip. They can be advised through email, registered online with all of their step and foot in the state of Texas. So we're excited about that. Also with this part is one of the, the only test that will offer a diagnostic component. And what we want to do is use that to assist in those students that are placed in developmental studies. Right now, they received a score that says that they failed, they were unsuccessful. They don't know what area. This way, they'll be able to walk out with the diagnostic component, hopefully go to our Learning Assistance Center, faculty members, whoever, and make that educational plan. So we're looking forward to that. We're also looking at the exciting idea of being able to go to our feeder high schools. Currently, we have all the BISD schools come on campus, Los Fresnos, Rio Honda, San Benito, Port Isabel. We're now using our ITech testing space there. They come on campus to take the five-hour Quick THEA. Just kind of informally, I've been talking to the high schools counselors at the various high schools and they welcome us to come to their schools. We can use our computer lab and again, test their students, get them advised, get them registered, and the student does not have to leave the comfort of their high school. And on demand for our students, we're looking at trying to get a little space close to our office to set up just four computers for our students that want to come by and retake the test. They can take it on demand, so that's a great possibility. And that's us.
That's it.
Typical testing, any questions or concerns?
Here's a question.
Yes, sir.
Having taken many of these tests in my lifetime, including the LSAT. Is there any networking between your office and any office that offers prep courses?
We can refer a student to a prep course. We cannot be involved since we actually administer the test.
Okay.
And some of the live tests are actually housed in our vault.
Ah.
So it'd be a conflict of interest if we do that. We do refer students to our Learning Assistance Center. Dean Nelson just mentioned that they're going to be doing some GRE study prep work that will refer our students that sign up for GRE to contact Dean Nelson.
And are these tests industry-driven, example being the CPA exam? You don't offer that here.
What would happen is if a student or a person that would want to take the CPA exam, and I don't know where the site is, but say it's in San Antonio. The rule of thumb is if the test center is 100 miles away from where you live, they would contact our office and ask if we could administer that.
I see.
Nine and a half times out of 10, we like to do that, but you're looking at the testing office, so we're kind of limited on staff and space, but we, anything that we could help with the community, we would be more than happy to provide that services.
Sure, thank you very much.
We, I thank you very, very much. This office has grown tremendously and they're always, every year, they're always adding more services with, with obviously very limited personnel and space and so we thank you very, very much for this important function and service for us.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I have to add something, I'm sorry. You know, it's very intimidating to go on and take a test like this and y'all are very friendly. As I was taking GRE and I was like, didn't want to, was afraid, and y'all are just, well, you know, and after so.
Makes a big difference, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
In response to your question also, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Ragland, are we not working with some LSAT prep this, during the, is it the pre-law academy?
Yes, for the first time this summer, our pre-law academy will actually have some Kaplan representatives here to teach the LSAT in the mornings to our students, that two-week program. So this will be a first and this will be the only place that they will be able to get training to prepare for the LSAT.
I still remember driving to Edinburgh in my Volkswagen many, many years ago to take the LSAT in Penham, sure.
You remember that?
Have them well-prepared.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Dr. Ragland, will they also have the Kaplan course for the MCAT, the Medical Colleges Advisory Center?
Yes, we do. The last several years, we've been giving some extra funding to the University of Houston, as a matter of fact, to be able to offer pre-MCAT training. And Kaplan comes here and actually it's this time of the year, a little before this, and they offer 14 weeks on every weekend. And I think we got about 25 for the students to take their courses.
Great.
So we're beginning to really offer more opportunities for training and admissions and MCATs, GREs, and some else.
Great, great. Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Dr. Robles, is it MCAT, like a prep course for the LSAT?
Oh, dang, that was.
Oh, no. I'm thinking about another exam.
It took 15 years to become a cardiologist.
You're my doctor. Thank you, Dr. Ragland.
Okay, item number six is the legislative update for the board and Dr. Conwy Salavetta, welcome back, Dr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members, President Garcia. As you know, every other year, the Texas Legislature meets and during that time, during that short period of time, beginning in the first week of January and ending in the last week of May, the men and women of the legislature are tasked with preparing the budget for the biennium and passing all of the bills that come before them. And my task this evening will be to give you an update and overview as of this date of our UTB TSC legislative agenda, if I may. Before you, before each of you in your place, you have a little notebook like this. And I'm going to go, if I may, I'd like to direct you to the first page and go over that with you. I'd like to remind you that the institution, in preparation for the legislative session, prepares a what is called an LAR, Legislative Preparations Request, and that the, and that the University of Texas at Brownsville, Texas South Most College, LAR consists of several sections and this evening we'll just be going over one of those, but I wanted to let you, to remind you that the first portion of that, and maybe the most important portion, is the general revenue portion. And the general revenue for the institution is determined in the legislature, beginning both in the House and in the Senate, in Senate Finance and in the House and their Committee on Budgeting. The second item is the, the institution prepares a list of its exceptional item requests. And in this particular LAR at the legislature, we have exceptional item requests totaling $18.9 million. And the third portion are tuition revenue bonds. And once again, the institution, thinking way ahead, lists our building requests out into the future so that our tuition revenue bond request consists of five or six buildings totaling $134 million. And finally, the bills. And that's what really we're going to talk about this evening, to give you an update on the bills. I think it's important to note also.
Dr. Salavetta, would you stop there for just a moment and clarify the $134 million?
Yes, ma'am, I certainly will. The $134 million for tuition revenue bonds consists of seven buildings. Be happy to list them if you'd like. They are the Kinesiology Classroom and Laboratory Building, $12.5 million, a General Purpose Classroom and Office Building, $33.8 million, University Center at Harlingen, $18.2 million, Administrative Student Support Services Building, $9.2 million, Library, $39.3 million, Senate for Master Teaching, $4.6 million, and Fine Arts Instruction Center, $16.5 million, for a total of $134.1 million.
Thank you.
Now, yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
The intent on that one, if I just might add to what you've said, is that schools can ask for, there is no, there is no limit to what you can ask for in tuition revenue bonds. And we wanted to make sure, when we submitted this one, that we asked, that we weren't too humble in our request. We, that's happened before frankly, and so we wanted to make sure that that didn't happen again. So there's no problem knowing what our, our needs are before the Senate or the House. In fact, we don't ever expect most of that to get funded, but it's always on the, on the surface for consideration.
My limited experience and your vast experience have shown that we have to have these buildings on the radar screen very, very early on and carry them out over multiple sessions and riddle them down from the top priority down the list. And so it will take many, many years, if successful, to acquire those funds for all of those facilities.
Can you explain to the audience exactly what you mean when you refer a bill to finance or it's left pending in committee?
Could I do that within the context of each one?
Right.
Okay, so that on, let me explain to you what you have in your packet. In your packet, well, the first page is a long list of bills. Most of them are companion bills. We have, we're fortunate to have good working relationships both with Senator Lucio and Representative Oliveta. And so we always file a single bill in both houses, so in the House and in the Senate side, and so we can move them along simultaneously. And that works to our advantage. And so that's why you have, we have a long list, list of bills, I'm going to explain them. In, behind that, and divided by the green pages, I have provided you with the text of all of the bills that are listed. I'm not going to go through those tonight, but I provide those for you, all the bills, and where there is a fiscal note, I've provided you with the fiscal note. Where there is a bill analysis, I provide you with that. So at your, at your convenience and leisure, you can, you can look through those. Now, our, probably at the top of our agenda and our most important bill is House Bill 1063 and its companion bill, Senate Bill 801. This bill will allow us to, to assess the fee to the students that the students voted for that in order to fund the wellness and recreation facility that will be constructed on our campus and in effect owned by the students, built by the students. That, I'm happy to. That, I'm happy to report that, that, that bill is moving very, very well. It has, it was passed, it moved out of committee, it passed, it was voted on and passed by the House, it was sent over to the Senate side, and has moved along on the Senate side in what is called local and consent. You'll notice that under the Lucio bill, Senate Bill 801, I have their, the jargon, this is legislative jargon, their jargon, pulled down. What that means is that the House bill had already been sent over to the Senate before the Senate version had had a hearing. And so, that it didn't make any sense to tie up their agenda with hearing the same bill again. So they pull it, they pull it down. So, Senate Bill 801 is, is, no longer exists. House Bill 1063 is in the Senate side and will be passed in local and consent, and that we anticipate, and that will give us the, authorize us to assess the fee to the students, beginning in next fall. House Bill 2091 and Senate Bill 965 are our tuition revenue bond bills. Those are the bills that are filed on our behalf, both by our representative and our senator, every time there's an opportunity, which is every other session. Tuition revenue bonds are generally taken into consideration, not every session, but every other session, so it's about once every, every four years. The, our tuition revenue bond bill in the House was heard by the committee, and as I say, as I say there, left pending in committee. What, what has happened is, is all of the tuition revenue bills, and that's the same for all of the, all of the system, all of the institutions of higher education who are requesting tuition revenue bond bills. What the, the House, in this case, Higher Ed Committee, has done is refer all of the tuition revenue bond bills to, to what is called Article 11. All of the bill, all of the TRB bills go to Article 11. And there, and, and they stay there, and then one of the, one of the members of the Conference Committee has a, what is called a shell bill, a bill with nothing in it. And so, that when finally, the decision is made, if and when the decision is made to fund tuition revenue bond bills, the language is placed in the shell bill, and that's how the tuition revenue bond would be funded. All right? So that, our, our tuition revenue bond request, both in the House and the Senate, have moved along, have had their hearings, and have been sent over with the other institutions to this Article 11. The decision on whether or not tuition revenue bonds will be granted to institutions will come late in the session. Okay, moving along. You'll notice there, Senate Bill 1059, this is a bill that was filed, a tuition revenue bond bill that was filed by Senator Lucio to create what is called a South Texas Aerospace Cluster. And the amount there is $40 million. In fact, in that bill, and you have the text of the bill in your packet, what that bill would do was fund a tuition revenue bond for a building, in effect, for UTB, in the amount of $40 million. One for TSTC in Harlingen for $20 million, and one for UT Pan American for $20 million. The difference between this tuition revenue bond request and the regular tuition revenue bond request is that what Senator Lucio in his bill is seeking is that the debt service to, 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 for these bonds would come from the governor's enterprise fund and not from the Legislature. All right? There, that has not, well, all the tuition revenue bond bills have been referred to finance, as I say there. The next two are for, House Bill 2184 authored by Oliva, and Senate Bill 1452 authored by Lucio, are companion bills that would create at the University of Texas at Brownsville, Texas Southmost College, a Texas Academy for Mathematics and Science. Basically, what this would do is create an opportunity on our campus for junior and senior high school students to come to the university, to sit in regular university classes. These would be exceptional students in mathematics and science, so that at the end of the two years, when they would ordinarily graduate from high school, they would graduate from high school and receive an associate's degree in many cases, and move right into their junior year at the university in careers in mathematics and science. The, we anticipate that the, the House Bill 2184 will be heard in committee, not this coming week, but the following week. That is, that is what we believe. I have to tell you that the, the drop dead date for bills to be heard in committee is approximately May 1st. That, what that means, and I have, behind this sheet, there's a calendar in there for you. There is a date, there's a date that if the bills are not heard in committee by that date, and what, and what they call kicked out of committee, they're dead. They have to be heard by that date so they can be calendered.
So is this bill going to be heard before that date?
I, I was assured on the phone this very afternoon, because I knew that question would come up, and I need to know, and we all need to know that it would be, that it would be, and that it will not be this coming week, it will be the following week. And that most likely, it would be heard in the Senate and, and not in the House. The House Committee on Higher Ed is simply not moving.
And that would be good for us, because the, the originator of this idea is Senator Zaffarini, and she proposed something like this in Laredo, so we simply followed suit. And so, we're hoping that if it's successful in Laredo, she would allow us to also have it be successful in Brownsville.
May I comment further on that? In fact, Senator Zaffarini's bill, which is Senate Bill 448, has already been kicked out of committee through the Senate and into local and consent. I mean, it is flying along. And Senator Zaffarini is on the committee which will hear our bill. So you are absolutely correct, it is to our advantage that our, our academy be heard in the Senate side, and I'm optimistic that it, that it will be.
Has the other bill, her bill for Laredo, made it through the House?
It's on the House side, yes, ma'am.
Has it made it through the House?
It has not made it through the House. It's, it's sent to the House. Yes.
Excuse me, is this bill you named after Dr. Zaffarini, or is this something that's been done since then?
It's been, you know, Dr. Ragland knows a lot about that. At North Texas University, and there are several universities in Texas that have Texas Academies.
The University of North Texas in Denton has a very successful program. They attract a couple hundred students, top students from all over, each year for the TAMS program. And here, the students actually become college students. They sit in class right next to regular college students. There's some special activities and special attention these young students get. In our situation, we would begin, because we have limited housing, we would begin probably with students coming to campus every day, just like most of our students come to campus every day. Eventually, when we have housing to accommodate them, we could actually have a residential TAMS program. And of course, students are, are highly motivated, they are able and capable of doing college-level work, so we see this as being, making a real contribution to our community and to the state of Texas, to produce these students with expertise in, in math and science at a young age.
Thank you. In, in researching Texas Academies, I've, in the statutes, I've found that there are probably a good half dozen of the different types. Senator Zaffarini's academy will be called, will be for international studies, and it's a social science academy. Ours will be a math and science academy, which is the most common. There is a culture and communications academy, and there's a fine arts academy for, sort of like magnet schools at the university level. Moving on, Senate Bill 940 is the bill, Senator Lucio's bill, which would propose a law school at the University of Texas at Brownsville. This, this bill has been referred to the Senate Subcommittee on Higher Education, and has not been scheduled. The conventional wisdom is that it won't be.
However, I might add that, that what he's asking for is simply that the Coordinating Board study the feasibility of, of developing a plan for a law school. And the Coordinating Board has, in fact, had a study prepared for a couple of years that determined that if a law school, an additional law school were to be built in Texas, that one of the two sites that should get the law school would be the Rio Grande Valley. So, while it kind of comes in out of left field during this legislative session, so did the rack when the Senator proposed it. And so, you got to start somewhere, and, and I think his proposal is a, is a good place, a place to start.
I, I offer, I include on our list, for, because it's, it's interesting for us to follow, Senator Lucio's Senate Bill 1412. What this, what this bill would do is allow economic development funds, like those funds which are created in this community by the 4A community fund, so from BDC to GBIC, to fund educational facilities and learning centers. And so, I just, I, that's, and that's moving along, it's in the Subcommittee on Emerging Technologies in Economic Development. House Bill 3001 is Chairwoman Morrison's bill, Jeanne Morrison is the Chair of Higher Education. And what, this is interesting because her, this is a HEEF bill. It's a bill which, which proposes to increase fund, the level of HEEF to several, not all, but several of the, of the HEEF-receiving institutions. We are one of those. And what this would do, and it has, it is, and it's been left pending in her own committee, what it would do was it would basically increase our HEEF amount from approximately $1 million to $3.4 million. I also, I also included Representative Chavez's House Bill 2421, because this is a, this is a bill that has a lot of attention in the community colleges and technical colleges around the state. Because what it, this is where the jobs, this is a jobs program bill, this is where the skills development grants and the funds that we receive to do worker retraining come from. And so, this is in economic development. And as I say there, what left pending means, left pending is not necessarily a negative statement. From my, my experience, if the, the committee, when it hear, when the bill is laid out and hears the, the bill, if there's not a quorum present at the time, then they leave it pending. And they bank up a large number of bills, and on each agenda, in fact, they have bills that have been left pending, and they vote on them in the, when they get, when they, when they want to. Two, two bills that are not, have not been proposed by us, but have been proposed by the Brown, the Foundation for Brownsville Sports and are carried both in the Senate and the House, are a House Bill 2092, which would create a, which would, which would, there's a fund, there's a little-known fund that is controlled by the Governor's Office in Texas for communities of 1 million or more, counties of 1 million or more. And that is a fund, which, and that, of course, narrows it down to three. Three communities that could have a Super Bowl, that could have an NBA championship, could have a Final Four championship, could have the Olympic Games. And so, that, and that money, and there's a corpus of money, sizable amount of money sitting there, that has not been drawn down by those three communities. And what this bill would do is lower the threshold from one, counties of 1 million to counties of 250,000, thus, thus adding approximately 10 communities in the state of Texas who could, who could potentially draw on this fund. And what the, what the Foundation for Brownsville Sports is trying to do is have this, have this passed, so that they might be able to receive funds in, in this community. And the other bill, sort of companion bill, proposed by the Foundation for Brownsville Sports, is an in-state tuition bill for what are called elite or Olympic and/or Olympic athletes. And basically, what this, what this bill has passed, and it seems to be moving, what this bill would do is if an elite and potential Olympic athlete comes to a community where there's a university, let's say from Colorado, from California, from Michigan, into Texas, then they would be able to go, to register in that university and pay in-state tuition, thus being an additional perk to that athlete coming to Texas, to a Texas community and a Texas university. So, that, that gives you an overview of the bills that we are following. The one at the very top of the list is, is our, our most important one, and it's moving along well. Tuition revenue bond bills are, are, are sitting over there in Article 11, waiting for the decision-makers to decide what will be funded, if anything, and the, and then assortment of other bills that affect this. There are, in, if you do a text search on Texas Legislature online, I provided you with that website, on higher education, you get 655 bills. If you do a text, if you do a search on junior college, and you recall that in the statutes of Texas, where, where junior college, there are 161 bills. After May 5th, or May 10th for sure, those are going to be reduced down to the bare minimum of those that have the potential to, to be voted on and go to the Governor's Office. And so, I look forward to giving you another update as, as we approach that, that point.
Tony, once a bill has been presented, and then it moves to the committees, and then ultimately to the Senate or to the, to the House, do our legislators still have the influence on the committee or that is hearing that bill to perhaps hear the reason why we need to so, so badly?
They, they do. They have, they have the potential to have influence, but the, as President Garcia will tell you, the, the, the climate and the, and the, and the composition of the Texas Legislature, and the leadership especially, is, is one that, we'll say, is, has not been particularly sensitive to South Texas needs.
Is there, if you had to, I know you've done a lot of work over the years, and you've been up and down the corridor between the Valley and Austin, but if you had to, in one statement, tell us why that is, just one, what do you think that would be?
Power in politics.
Now, what I, kind of in addition to that, maybe as an aside, there's a conference committee that's already been formed. The Conference Committee is made up of three senators and three representatives. And that Conference Committee ends up being the committee that decides who gets what toward the end.
I have those names if you'd like.
And on the Senate side, our, our ally will be Senator Zaffarini.
Exactly.
On the House side, we really do not have an ally from South Texas.
We have Representative Luna from Corpus Christi.
Representative Luna, okay. So, so those are the two folks that will, that will be affecting our fate the most when it goes to conference. And that's really when, when the bills that come out of Article 11 and some of the other ones that are kind of on the edge teetering get decided. And, and your question's a very, very good one, but, but influence is, is found in many different ways there. And it may be that there's, there, there has been some trading on, on other, on other bills. And so, we would hope, I mean, our, our legislators have a lot, many, many years of experience, and, and have been very helpful to many of these other legislators. And so, it is our hope that they will use those years of experience to assist us as we make it through this session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salavetta. Very informative. Just move on to item break, and this is the, no, is it? Yes, it is. The, this is the first partial committee, and that's going to be Dr. Monsieur Campirano.
There are, I will go ahead and present the report, but essentially, you- There are, I will go ahead and present the report, but essentially you have four items for consideration. The first item for consideration is the district's insurance policy renewal. The district's property insurance renewal is up in May. And what you have before you is a recommendation to renew the property insurance with Representative Shepard Walton and King to accept a package two in your proposal in the amount of $676,143. The difference between this package and the other package is not only cost, but you also have another carrier. Instead of alliance, you will be going with, we would recommend going with CNA. But nonetheless, it would be at a cost of $676,143 versus a cost of $690,850. This does represent an increase of approximately 1% over the current premium costs. And we did not have a quorum at the committee, but we did discuss it amongst the members who were there, and we did have consensus. And I would move to recommend that we accept the proposal to renew the property insurance from Shepard Walton and King for an annual premium in the amount of $676,143.
Motion's been made by Mr. Campirano, second by Ms. Friedler. Okay. Any discussion on this item? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
The next item is the recommendation to award the contract for auditing services for the next two years to the auditing firm, Long Chilton. As you recall, we changed auditors, and Long and Chilton was selected to do the audit for fiscal year ending 2004. In the options that went out for solicitation for auditing services, we do have the option to extend the contract for another two years. Certainly, the firm did a very good job on the audit. It is good to keep some continuity. So again, I would recommend, along with the consensus that was reached by those attending the meeting, is to recommend to this board that we renew or award the contract to Long and Chilton for auditing services for the next two years. So this would be for fiscal year 2005 and 2006. And in doing so, you will also include the audit for the foundation. So again, I make that motion.
Motion's been made by Mr. Campirano, second by Mrs. Zimmerman. All in favor? All opposed? None? Motion carries.
The next item is one that should bring a round of applause because it's parking, parking for the wellness, I'm sorry, parking for the, associated with the School of Education and the School of Business. So again, a bid, packages were sent out. You had three responding bids, all qualified bids. The low bidder is GNT paving from Brownsville in the amount of $2,094,981.15. You're talking about 1,200 parking spaces that would be added to campus parking.
And it's not just for the business campus?
No, no. It's adding an additional 1,200 parking spaces for campus parking.
And this is part of the bond project?
Part of it is and part of it is not, not the entire amount.
I understand. I think that phase one is the part that goes for the business education complex, and then phase two and three and four would be the...
There's multiple phases.
Is that correct, Dr. Reno?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Campirano, if I may, just add a bit to your report there. And as Mr. Campirano reminded us, addressing the needs for parking on our campus was one important part of the bond project. In fact, we have formed a transportation task force on campus that is looking at all of our transportation needs. Every growing university faces similar challenges to provide efficient, convenient, and safe access to its campus. The task force is exploring solutions such as encouraging people to walk to campus, to use bicycles to reach campus, to carpool, and we're also looking at developing a shuttle system. We'll have incorporation with the Brownsville Urban System that would move people between this campus and ITech. We'll have a report to the administration and trustees soon. I do predict that all of these solutions will be recommended to you. Of course, we will also continue our efforts to add more parking spaces. And so the bid which we are recommending to you this evening will make a substantial addition to our campus parking facilities. We have currently 2,600, 2,600 spaces on this campus. The project that we are recommending in this bid provides an additional 1,200 spaces. This addition, along with the spaces being constructed as part of the education/business complex, would increase our campus parking facilities by over 50%. We do have a graphic that's in your binder, it's also on the screen now. The area labeled under construction, as you were referring to, Mr. Chairman, is the 200 spaces that are being constructed as part of the education/business contract. We have gone out for bids to construct what you see on the graphic as phases one, two, three, and four of this lot. This lot would be built adjacent to the lot currently under construction for the education business complex. And you can see all the phases there on the graphic. It includes 1,210 spaces, lighting, emergency phones, landscaping, drainage, and fencing along the back perimeter of the lot. Three bids were received. The lowest qualified bidder is GNT Paving Company of Brownsville. Their bid was for $2,094,981. The next bid was from R&amp;R Paving for about $156,000 more. We do recommend approval of the bid from GNT Paving Company.
Dr. Reno, how long is it up to date?
Please.
How long is it up to date?
We, how long before we have construction?
Until it's finished.
Well, we will begin, we hope to have phase one underway in September, so by the end of the fall semester, we would hope to have it all completed.
Pretty fast. Mr. Campirano, did you make a motion to...
Yes, I did, to accept the bid from GNT Paving.
Motion's been made by Mr. Campirano, second by Mrs. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
The last item that was discussed at the meeting was a consideration, possible action on the architect for the Wellness Recreation Fitness and Kinesiology Complex. In your package for consideration is a contract to hire 3DI International to provide architectural services for the new Wellness Recreation Fitness and Kinesiology Complex. The campus issued a request for proposals. Multiple proposals were received, 20 to be exact. All the proposals were received and rated by a selection committee composed of campus representatives and staff of the Office of Facilities Planning and Construction. Three firms were interviewed. On the basis of the presentation and relevant project experience, 3DI International is being recommended for this project. The fee for the project is 6% of construction. It's well within the acceptable norm for this type of service. As you know, 3DI is the one that helped us in facilitating the update of the master plan for the campus. So again, I would recommend to approve the contract with 3D International Architects to provide services for the Wellness Recreation Fitness and Kinesiology Complex.
Motion's made by Mr. Campirano.
I'll second. Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ms. Friedler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Campirano. With music.
Yes, background music.
Okay. Item number nine, it's second quarter financials and investment reports, and our common board is here to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garcia, financial statements for the second quarter and the investment report have been included in your binders. They are being provided for informational purposes only and do not require any action. These statements are for the fiscal year 2004-2005 and cover operations from September of '04 through February of '05. The investment report shows total interest earned for the second quarter, through the second quarter, for the second quarter, I'm sorry, of 112,000. The interest is being generated through the district's various checking and savings accounts with Lone Star National Bank. I will take any questions you may have regarding these reports at this time.
Have any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, next is the construction report. Dr. Reno, Dr. Wayne Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Moore and I will give the construction report this evening. First, we'd like to provide an update on the Ford Brown Memorial Golf Course Clubhouse. Construction on the clubhouse is proceeding at a good rate. This is a view of the front elevation of the new clubhouse. You can see on the inside that some of the finishes have been installed. A lot of the paint that, and the flooring will go down soon. This is the meeting room, the conference room on the west side of the building. This is a view of the back porch that faces overlooking the golf course.
May I order this?
Thank you, yes, sir. Very similar view from the greens of the back porch. The project is on schedule. We're pleased to report. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, sir. We've got a wonderful bridge. If you haven't been over, I invite you to come over to the...
Absolutely. We have a wonderful bridge. Big, awesome bridge.
That, our first.
Our first bridge.
And it's lovely. You can see, there it is. See it right back there? We're working on site work. We've had, we've done some grading and ensuring that the bridge and all of our site work meets all of the handicapped accessible requirements for the campus. We've got the growing vaults with a sample light that I want, Dr. Garcia, to be sure she sees so we can go ahead with it. She hasn't seen it before. Lovely ironwork, grill work, not iron, it's grill work going in all over the campus. The interior of the dome, which will be closed in tomorrow. Air conditioning in this part of the facility will begin late next week or early the following week. I went through a couple of days ago and then again today, and the difference in how clean it is has just been amazing. Scanser has brought in three new supervisors, one for each part of the building. So they have a supervisor in each building. We're really rushing to complete this building in time, and there's that lovely... And the walk across in the middle, you think you're in another world, and so I'm going to take you on a little walk. Very quick walk across. We have, you can see we have a little seating area right in the middle, not exactly in the middle, but where you can see all the way down each side of the osaka, there are lots of birds and trees, and with the college park program and other things coming on in the next year or so, it's just going to be a great place to spend an afternoon. And I look forward to mid-July when faculty can get in and we can be ready for classes August 22nd. It's going to be tight, we're going to get there. We have a lovely dome too that we haven't shown yet because it's going to be a surprise. So I invite all the board members, anytime, give me a call, or Veronica, we'll take you for it. You'll be glad to show this fine facility off. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Okay, proposed meeting dates for the board trustees is on May 19th, June 30th. There shall be no meeting in the month of July, and August 25th. And do we have any other announcements, Dr. Garcia? So may I have then a motion to adjourn?
Some of.